Okay. Let's get started. Ready? Alright. You'll join me to play. To the dance floor and... Same thing, to the lady. Yeah, I got you, that was what you did. Trusty Alice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I cut you? Okay. Okay. Oh, that's yours, sir. You're not yours, then. Alright, that brings us to item five. Adoption and approval of the agenda. Five point one, approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. And I'll respond. Approval of the minutes. We have several meetings here. Six point one, approval of the minutes of the March twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. I believe that was the study session. Minutes. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Six point two, approval of the minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and seventeen.
So move.
Second. Corrections, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six point three, approval of the minutes of April twenty fifth, two thousand and seventeen. So move. Second. Anything? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now to the fun part. Item number seven, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. Seven point one, student reports to the board. Let's see, we've got Crossroads and San Antonio Valley Oaks. Are San Antonio and Valley Oaks together or separate? Like that. Casa Grande, a little higher. So let's just go down the list and we will start with Crossroads.
Hi, I'm Lana.
And I'm Stephanie. We both go to Crossroads Community Day School. And we are here today to talk about Crossroads and activities we are involved in.
We started a year with nine students and we have grown up to thirty students through seventh and ninth grade. We have learned many things this year. Our favorite subject would have to be PE and our sport would be flag football. We like flag football because we get to interact with all our classmates and get to say our...
The environment has been... The environment has been a major circularity this year. Currently, we are working in construction with the community organizations to design, create, or own gardens in native California plants. We are each choosing two of our favorite Mediterranean or native California plants to be planted in our garden.
Learning the things that PE could be fun and difficult at the same time because it's a great way to learn something you have never experienced or had a chance to do. And when our teachers have time to teach us something new, we look forward to it. We learned how to track the sun by making an path in the finder. This helps us find the direction of the sun and how high it is. After we calculate what we have got, we grab.
We think that the Crossroads environment is a pretty good place to learn and interact with people. We have been on two field trips, which are in Petaluma River and water treatment plant, where we learned a lot about our water and how to take care of our earth.
We are in the process of designing a solar model community. We have new spots and standards we will learn to use these during the project. We read, blessed the bees and children, where leakage and sun spring. We dismantled garbage electronics to recycle into our worm bins and people came in to teach us about the importance of recycling and how to start a worm bin. And these are just a few things we did and experienced at Crossroads.
We have benefited from the smaller learning environment at Crossroads. It has helped us get us closer to getting back on track towards graduation. Next year, we hope to continue in alternative education in a smaller setting of Carpe Diem to continue our success. We would like to thank the board members for your support and alternative education at Crossroads.
You guys put on a great open house as well. There were a lot of projects out there, tons of arts. A great open house. Really? What do you say was next, Sam?
I'm gonna pitch hit because we are missing a member.
Do you want me to pitch it?
No, this is fine. Aren't you guys prepared for that?
Yeah. Hello, my name is Sal Garcia and I'm the representative of San Antonio High School. And...
You are?
Hi, I'm Garcia.
And I'm Kylie Chikini-Hay. And I teach English and Leadership at San Antonio High School. And this is the leadership class. We've put together this little slideshow for you. We want to share a few things about San Antonio High School with you. So the first thing they put together is why we love San Antonio High School. So we're gonna kind of talk about some of the aspects about the high school that the students really love about the school. And there we go. Maria Contreras. There you go. Ready? Okay.
Okay, so I'm Maria Contreras. Okay, so we love San Antonio because we have small classes and we have a relationship with our teachers. It's more one-on-one, not like the bigger schools. Our teachers recognize their students every Wednesday and they announce them to the lab teacher the next day. We all know each other and support each other and we're accepting of each other and respect each other's needs. Another reason why we love San Antonio is because we have second opportunity to school. We have SOS, Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays at their school. This helps students catch up in their schoolwork. This also provides a quiet room for students so they can earn extra credit in their classes. It also helps when students want to get... Wait to get picked up from their parents, they can always go to SOS to work on classwork. It also has reduced the number of failing grades by up to half compared to last year. We also have Mentor Day. We have Mentor Day at least once a month and the mentor teachers choose their mentor students. It is great because mentor teachers help students stay on track for graduation. Having a mentor teacher makes the school an even more specific place, knowing we have a teacher who goes to church. Now, I would like to introduce our fellow classmates, Sal Garcia, to talk to you guys about our special events.
So for special events, we had Health and Wellness Day, where a bunch of people with different types of careers came down to our school and gave us examples on what they do and the programs they offered for what to get into what they're doing, such as steel welding, plumbing, electricians, and other degrees such as comedians and etc. And our assistant district attorney, Bill Broccoli, came down to discuss our First Amendment to let us know that we still have, like every other right as any other adult. And he kind of gave us a brief refreshment from memory of that. And we also have a presentation by the police department. They basically explained what was going around with Petaluma, what they do, how they patrol Petaluma, and basically also how they got into the police academy and how to become a police. We're also doing the Steelhead Fish Project. There's a cool little picture of fishies up there. Steelhead Project, we got thirty eggs from the fish hatchery. I forget the location. And we basically put them in a tank and we watched them hatch. And you can see it swimming there. And we plan on releasing it pretty soon into, yeah, which river? I apologize for that. And we also have Assembly Awards, like once a month, to recognize students for their hard work and their achievements. And the field trip we've gone on is the Academy of Science. We got to go to the forest. I don't know if you can explain it. It's like a fall. It's like cool. And there's like a bunch of butterflies and snakes. And we also went to the River Heritage Center, where we got a test in the oxygen levels and see what was going on and the acid levels of the water to see what was going on and why it was so like... We fly in there, like you want a lot of fish. And we also went to the San Rosa Junior College, where seniors went there and they presented programs they offered for seniors to whatever... There's no words, but... They basically offered programs for whatever career they're trying to get into. We also went to the Mayhem Poets. Well, groups of students from this new heritage class went to a Mayhem Poets as a producer for a big center and looked at poets from long ago, see how their language developed from then to now. And as I brought up in the last slide, the fish hatchery field trip, which we have not gone on yet, and it's on the way. And leadership sponsored activities. We do Strength Finder. I think that's... Strength Finder.
So we have a grant, we got a Rotary Grant for Strength Finder. All three of these students are new this semester, so they didn't have the opportunity to do that. But it's a online quiz that you take and it gives you, kind of gives you your own strengths. And then we talked about how we can use those strengths in our future as well as as a class collaboratively. So that's one of the things we did.
And we also do a newsletter and basically a report from throughout the whole school, what's going on, upcoming events, and students of the month. And we also did a leukemia and phobia fundraiser. I forget the thing. We did that one. We also did Halloween activities. We also do birthday cards for students' birthdays. And we also do candy grams during the Christmas season to... And thank you, Helen and Lisa, for offering San Antonio for us.
I have a question for you. Is your logo new or did you just get sweatshirts? I haven't seen that.
Oh, yeah, they're, I think they're new.
I like that. I like the logo. Okay, Valley Oaks.
Hi, my name is Marissa Gyl.
And my name is Angelina Foote. And we're students at Valley Oaks School.
This year has been a busy month for us at Valley Oaks and we'd like to share with you some of the wonderful and amazing things that we've put up to. We're a small school of about seventy students, grade seven to twelve. And this year, nineteen of our classmates will complete their high school requirements and graduate. Our individualized instruction allows us to get to know all of our teachers very well. As you can see, we have a pretty awesome staff. This year, we worked with Casa Grande's entrepreneurship class to design and produce our T-shirts.
Alright, please.
As a student at Valley Oaks, I appreciate the opportunity to express myself in my classes. This is an example of the work one of our classmates made. We are so fortunate to have such a lovely campus, but it takes a lot of work to keep everything looking so beautiful. We have two garden work parties during the year, one in the fall and one in the spring. We invite students and their families to join us to come read and plant new flowers in our garden beds. Our beautiful gardens provide lots of opportunities for scientific and mathematics studies. And our teachers make it fun and interesting for us.
Even though Valley Oaks isn't an independent study school, there's lots of opportunities for us to study and work with other classmates. Sometimes we hang out in the lab and work on our assignments. Other times, we'll work in collaborative groups and in math groups.
We have been on some field trips this year. We've gone to UC Berkeley, Point Reyes National Seashore, the Legion of Honor, and the Marine Naval Center.
We also have collaborative PE classes. On Fridays, we run lift weights and ride speed bikes.
We have some great elective choices here, too. Textiles is a pretty popular one. Students who sign up for this course learn how to construct garments and we learn how to knit. We also have amazing labs where we get to try out all kinds of interesting things. Sometimes we work with partners, sometimes we work with our teacher. Some of our students entered the science fair and we've been known to bring home a few medals. This year, one of our classmates, Ethan Schwigel, entered the five-minute film festival competition and won the feature category. We are very proud of him.
We love our school and we want to thank all of our teachers for all they do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so it's to Casa Grande?
Yeah. Petaluma.
It says Casa.
Good evening, I'm Emily White. I'm the ASB president for next year, coming in San Antonio eighteen.
I'm Angela A. S. B. Commissioner of Activities for year sixteen and seventeen.
So recently, we've had a lot of accomplishments that we're very proud of. First being ACT Tech Championship. This is where the academic department students were competing and they won thirty-fourth, this was their thirty-fourth year at regionals, and they won seventh in the state and tenth in the nation. For journalism, we recently had the Press Democrat Awards and they won seven first-place awards there. Also, for the GEA, they won seventh in the nation. We also had our students who don't speak English as a first language, fifty of them tested proficient English recently. And then we also had the CASP test for all juniors. It's a college readiness test. And there's a math section and an English section. So as far as the arts, we have culinary. There was a recent competition for Chefs of Tomorrow and they won it. And then for the Casa Grande Band and Choir, they attended Music Awards and they won superior rankings for the band and the choir.
Also, our sports, the lacrosse team had an overall record of eighteen wins and four losses and a league record of ten wins and zero losses. The baseball team had an overall record of seventeen wins and four losses and a league record of eleven wins and one loss. Also, in senior news, we have our Senior Awards Night coming up on the twenty-fifth of May. And currently, the seniors are presenting their senior projects and that's going on next week. We also had seniors complete eight thousand hours of community service work. And this last Saturday, we held our senior prom.
So thank you so much for your time and also your friendship with our amazing teachers. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jordan Marshall. I am Petaluma High's Senior Student Body Vice President and I'm here to present our board meeting conversation. So recently, we've had some school activities, which I will go over. We had our band went to Disneyland and had a competition there. We had our Petaluma Education Foundation Night, where students from Petaluma High got multiple scholarships. We had Skills USA competition. We had our Spring Musical. And we have many school standouts. So our marching band got first place in Disneyland. Our choir, Rhythm Supple, and Barsu Jazz, all got second. And Mason and Jesse Bluet got Maestro Award. So these are like for their solo performances throughout the competition. The Addams Family, we had two weekends. This is, those are them, like their characters, like on the back screen and the whole thing. It was a really wonderful performance where they took the Addams Family and they kind of put a twist on it, where every single person who tried out, like got a role. And they even had our Italian Foreign Exchange student, some made-up role where all he said was cannoli. It was sad. We also obviously had salsa competition on St. Co. de Mayo, where teachers, a bunch of teachers, put in their salsa and they randomly, kids randomly went around and sampled. Miss Eaton won the sauce competition, but it was, it was a wonderful bit. So our boys tennis and our wrestling team both won SCL championships this year. Our cheerleading squad won Nationals. And our Skills USA team won a bunch of medals at the state competition recently. This is what Ellison Field is supposed to look like after the remodel. That's our field, but the plans is what's gonna be drawn on it. It's looking good. Our boys golf team won SCL championships. And we have, this is a picture of Phoebe Golden accepting the Health and Sciences Press Democrat Awards and Anthony Hollings accepting the Bill King Award. We had some senior nights for girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, baseball. And this is a group of our SRJC jumpstart getting ready for the fall. We, these are the students from Mr. Nakata and Ms. Duda's class. They did a river cleanup. Where twenty students picked up, to pick up loads of trash at Steamer Landing last Saturday. Also, our FFA team went to state finals at Cal Poly. We had Best Informed Greenhand Welding, Advent Hand, Farm Business Management, and Dairy Judging. The dairy team won first place overall and will travel to Indiana this fall to compete at Nationals. Our farm business team was second overall. And Kelsey Martin was the first high individual football competition for farm business. And in Ad Mechanics, Clayton Arts was the top in the state in electrical wiring for the contest. We also have a program called College Dream Team. And this is twelve Petaluma High juniors who are aiming to go to college, but they can't afford outside of school college counselors. Our Petaluma High staff helps them like take SAT prep, how it gets them to apply, and other support. Every fall, after like they apply for schools, they get twelve more juniors and continue with the program. So coming up, we have a lot of things, a lot of senior things. We have Senior Recognition Nights, Senior Sunset, the car show, every year. But this year, because we're getting our new field, the car show, all the cars are going to be around Ellison Field. And in the middle, we're having a whole carnival all day at the field, where people can come out to tutorial and lunch and look at all the pretty cars. And we get yearbooks and we, it's gonna be a whole fun day. We also have prom coming up and cookies and crams. We have senior rally and graduation. Our prom this year is Sunday, May twenty-eighth, at the Bentley Reserve. Same place as Casa's this last weekend. And our theme is "In a Chanted Evening." Thank you. Thanks.
I believe we have a presentation, a student presentation. Yes?
Hello, my name is Jessica Parch. And I attend Petaluma's elementary art school. And he has other crews. Other crews are attending the candy in the fourth grade. He has a student who is a colorblind student in the seventh grade and has been a leading example of what the program expects with his fourth annual GPA. Edgar is an exemplary student who takes full responsibility for his learning by stepping beyond classroom hours to achieve success. He is always willing to accept the challenge with confidence that he can and will seek to understand if the convention is material. The effort and willingness that Edgar shows each day is a quality that will lead to much success. Edgar is on the school's advocate body seat and just competed in the Seminole Town, Seminole Town Survivors Challenge. He built and programmed a robot to compete in the capture the flag challenge. Edgar continually serves the community through service hours at Alpha Bet Sue. He completed a project to highlight the importance of this organization in our community, ultimately scoring an A-plus for his performance. Edgar and a classmate partnered together to create a well-developed website for the two thousand seventeen History Day Project. The vast array of skills Edgar exhibits has made him a top STEM student. Edgar uses every minute of his school day to keep current on his work as he has a busy extracurricular life of playing league soccer. Edgar's peers often look to him for advice and friendship as his willingness to help and be friends is incredible. Pax is grateful to have such a positive and heartwarming fellow student in our school.
Are you friends?
Yes.
Just friends?
Yeah.
Well, they're more than friends, but...
I have a little note here to dig a little deeper on that question.
Tell them.
Could they be related? Are you cousins?
Yeah.
I'll take that. It's very awesome that you got to present the award to him. I failed to tell you that, let's get you to look into that camera for just a couple of seconds so that everyone at home can see that Elvis is beautiful. But handsome face and all that you accomplished, we're so proud of you. And my understanding is that the superintendent will be bringing your plaque to school to embarrass you one more time at your school. Do you have any other friends or family that are here tonight or just your friends?
Oh, my family back there.
Where's your family?
Oh, my dad, sister, and...
Can you stand up? It's very important that we acknowledge all the work you do to support your achievement as well. So this is, this is a big part of you, not just... So thank you very much for all the support you give him. Congratulations on all your accomplishments and being such an amazing man.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for presenting. Really quick. Are we okay with like a two-minute break right now? Okay, we'll take a like a two-minute recess. So students, if you need to go home and get studying or sew prom dresses or something, you can exit graciously. Okay, come on in, folks, let's have a seat. Now we got lots of seats in the front. facilities update with Chris Thomas, our CEO. Take it away, Chris.
Okay. I have a few handouts just in case people can't see. So if you want to pass on the... So we wanted to come tonight and just give a touché on some of the projects we're working on. So we wanted to come tonight and just give a update on some of the projects we're gearing up for.
Make sure this board has one each.
Make sure what?
The board needs that.
So we wanted to come and just provide an update tonight for some of the projects we're gearing up for for summer of 2017. I want to take a moment to introduce a couple of people in the audience. We have Cam Lee with us of Marshall Lee Architects. We have Bill Fee here with Curduchian Associates. We have Chris Warfield, our Assistant Director of Maintenance Operations. We have Dave Ash, who is on the prom construction manager. And we have Michelle Willfeld, who is our Agent Assistant for Facilities and Maintenance. I tried to get them to sit in the front, but I think they're too shy. So these are some of the maintenance projects. So we have what are typically known as maintenance projects. Then we have various other capital facilities projects, including bond funding projects. There are many, many other things that will happen this summer in the area of maintenance and operations. We're gonna do a lot of planning in the schools and so on and so forth. So there's a lot of reaching stuff that will happen this summer. The school sites will be very busy places, but this is highlighting the more capital improvement types of projects, okay?
And where are these projects funded from?
I'll walk through, because there's kind of a little thing on each side. So at Grant Elementary School, we have a termite remediation project happening for the end of June. That's gonna be funded out of our routine maintenance account. It's kind of gonna be unusual because we're gonna be tenting the entire school. We have termites that are not, termites that live in the ground, they fly. And so the only way that you can do it is to come to school. We've been working with the school site. Michelle on the back, we're gonna fly, we're gonna do flyers in the maintenance, but people are kind of aware of it. So it'll happen about the last weekend, weekend in June. At Kettlewood, we have had some water intrusion slash dry rot issues specifically in the fitness center area of the building. So there's gonna be some repairs. In fact, there's on the consent agenda, I don't know what the contracts, this is related to that, that's being funded out of the deferred maintenance fund. At Pengrove, we've also had, so we've had a year of a lot of rain this year. So it has highlighted that we have some roofing challenges. Pengrove is one of the schools that we really need to do some roof repair, and that's gonna be happening this summer. We're estimating that project cost at around $175,000. The bid opening is Tuesday next week. And that's gonna be funded again with capital improvement, facilities, monies between deferred maintenance and our special reserve for capital outlet. We also have a water intrusion project in the basement at Pengrove, some of you may know. My daughter attends that sixth grade there, it's a very old school. And it's graded, and so you've got earth behind the basement area. So we've done some work on it so far. We're working with the water intrusion specialist company to help us understand how we can actually waterproof that building at the basement level. And then we'll be redoing the finishes on basement.
Oh, have you seen the basement at Pengrove? When you go Pengrove past, have you seen the basement?
It's a beautiful area, and it's actually a great space, got great light, lots of windows all along the front of it. It's a great space, and it's got pretty high ceilings for a basement. But we need to resolve the water issues before we can reconstruct it inside. At Casergranti High School, we also have some buildings with water intrusion issues. As you know, the modular buildings are adjacent to the softball field at the back of the campus. We're gonna be doing some roofing repairs, specifically some new coating on the roofing membrane at the top of those buildings. We have some other issues with the new multi that we're currently investigating, but we're not at the point where we know what that's supposed to look like. So it's a great question. So we have lots of capital facilities funds. You have Fund 14, which is formerly known as the Deferred Maintenance Fund, which you know. State used to give us the Deferred Maintenance Fund, we can have some residual funds from that. We have Fund 40 and 41 Elementary High School District, those are our special reserve for capital outlet. We have Fund 25 and 26 Elementary High School. That's the capital facilities fund which we use to account for developer fees. And all of those monies are specifically earmarked for capital improvements. So we can't use developer fees to do general operational types of things. They have to be earmarked and report them. Other. So this whole slide is dedicated to McDowell. So we are doing a portable replacement project at McDowell, and it's a complicated project. There's lots of phases to it, and just kind of walks through what we need to do. The first thing is we're taking the two portables at the very back of the campus, the adult ed, historically used. They were not, when they were installed, they did not go through the Division of State Architect approval process. We're gonna be relocating those to the transportation yard where we have two very, very, very old portables. One is being removed, actually, I think it's being demolished this week. Those two portables are gonna be replaced. A portable was removed many years ago, and then the one that we're removing. So that's gonna happen first, it'll probably happen before the end of May. The adult ed program wraps up May 12th, and so we're gonna be starting to do some of those. But we're also relocating, as we're adding new portable, so taking two out, we're putting three in. What we're doing is working with the school site staff to talk about how to reconfigure the programs there so that we can move all of the TK to six programs to the base area of the campus. And the modular, or what I call pod building for the front, will then house all of the adult ed, some of the off-service programs. So right now, for example, we have a first grade classroom in the pod along with most of the adult ed, you've got some arts students and others. So we want to really have all of the K6 campuses, the TK to six campuses in one area. And then the pod will be more of the adult ed programs. So we're gonna be relocating two programs out of the two existing classrooms at the back in addition to the two portables to the pod, adding three portables, and then moving four classrooms or programs that are currently in the pod that are K6-related, the TK to six, back to the two, the new portables and the other two classrooms. So there's a lot of coordination that goes with that. Part of the project includes a new fire alarm upgrades, fire alarm panel, includes new fire hydrant, the electrical restroom renovations to make those two adjacent restrooms available. The challenge with this project is it's coming in, it's coming in higher than what the original estimate was. So we've had bid results, it's not on action tonight, we're worried to take action, because it's coming in about $403,000. It's estimated around $300,000. We're seeing bid results coming in significantly higher. We're seeing that across the area, as much as the kindergarten room. We're seeing anywhere from 16 to 20% escalation. I know Cam and Bill are nodding with us because I know there's lots of neighboring districts that are spending the same thing. We're currently working to see if we can defer the fire hydrant, for example, to summer of '18 to reduce that cost. We're relooking at the electrical, because the electrical bids are either coming in very high. To see if we can rethink how we're gonna electrically support the community's portables. So for example, the two portables, C5 and C6, in the middle of the campus are being demolished. Can we rework that electrical support of the portables instead of upgrading the electrical back to campus? Does that make sense? So we're exploring those options. We call it value engineering. So we're hoping to bring this project back to you for award and contract on May 23rd. Cam, did I leave anything out you want to add in with that?
We need to go check the electrical, but it's looking pretty good right now. Can we reuse the electrical that we got out of the modulator that we're taking down? Not extended, but we can at least use what...
So anyway, that's the McDowell project, it's complicated, but I think it's really gonna be great at the end because we're gonna be able to have a campus that's not so segmented. We have adult ed at the back, and the K, TK to six program at the middle, and then a combination of programs in the front. It is gonna be a lot of work. Please feel free to stop me if you guys have more questions.
I have a question about the boys in Christa. Do they pay facilities fee?
No, I don't believe that they do.
And will all of that be done in the summer, ideally?
So Grant Elementary, this falls under the other category. So there's a music garden installation that's happening, and I put this in here because I thought you might quite sort of hear about it. So it's part of a maintenance project where Joe DiCarlo, our Director of Facilities and Maintenance, will be coming in with his crew, pulling out all of the older garden beds and et cetera. And then we're gonna regrade it, do some action. And then Emily, working with her group, are gonna have a music garden installed, and then we'll come in and pave it. It's right kind of toward the back, as you're getting toward the field, the last building.
What's in the music room?
Wow, what's in the music room? Do you want to take this? It's like these big items that are outside that you can play music on.
Oh, cool, okay.
But they're like in the shape of garden.
Yeah, I haven't seen, it's Dakota's charge of it, so I haven't seen what, I haven't seen what she's picked out.
We'll try to take pictures and bring them at the end of summer, that would be great. We were hoping, there's a blocktop coating that was added to that blocktop of Grant. I'm not sure how many years ago.
Not long ago.
No.
Six.
Six years ago.
Six?
Five and a half.
Yeah.
So we were told like yesterday.
Just outside the fire window.
So it's failing, and we were hoping to remove it. But in looking at removing it, it's become much more complicated because as we've done testing of it, it has zinc in it. And you did the disposal to scrape it, and the disposal of it's quite costly. You can ship it to Utah, who are okay with zinc. But that's also costly. So this one will most likely use words as we explore more options on how to deal with that issue. McKinley, we're looking at installation of a new Kinder Play Ground. So I put play area here because it's not just a play, it's not just a... Right. So we're working with the Kinder Teachers in Manhattan Paris to help design... Have you seen like McKinley's Kinder Play Yard, I use it loosely?
Yeah.
It's gonna have a synthetic area that will be like a soccer field with some really cool elements in it. And then it will also have a new play area specifically for Kinder with a track and some other elements. So it's gonna be pretty cool, we're very excited about it. We're hoping that PTA is gonna partner with us to help and fund it. And we're hoping to bring that back to you on May 23rd for approval to have, to make sure it's actually installed before the start of school. So we're very excited about McKinley. As are the Kinder Teachers, and I'm sure the Kinder parents are gonna be very excited about it too. Now we have all kinds of bond projects. So we have the McKinley Entryway project and the reconfigured drop-off. The bid came in about $377,000. The estimates were around $325,000 plus soft costs, construction costs. So you can see it's coming in, you know, fifty to twenty percent, sixty percent higher. We really would like to be forward with this project though, again, that's on, it makes sense for award and contract. And I don't know, Cam, do you want to add anything, I know we're working with Kurt, he does own it.
Pretty much basic qualities that Cam really deleted.
There's not a lot of value engineering items on this one.
If you went out to bid again, you wouldn't anticipate the bids would come in?
We won't, no, we don't. And the challenge is if we delayed, if we rejected these bids and went back out, we wouldn't be able to avoid the start of school. This is increment one, there's a second increment that Marshall Lee's working on to do the new cam in these. We separated that into increments because we knew we could get DSA approval on the reconfiguring drop-off. The structural elements of the campus take part later, get DSA approval. And we wanted to get this piece in because it's really the same. We've also worked with the city. We met with the city, who gave an input, so we did some adjustments to the design based on city input, and of course, site input as well. Cherry Valley, I've got Bill Fee and Cam both here to talk about the Cherry Valley track and field because that one is also coming in over. If you'll see what's attached in your packet, and I've got extra copies of what the design looks like, everybody wants to get some copies. So I don't, I don't want to kind of walk them through the Cherry Valley, because this is one we're really looking for direction on. We're not out to bid on this one yet, I think the bid's coming on Tuesday as well, but the estimates we're looking at are higher than we had hoped. Remember, the original budget was $1150, but then the engineers that worked on it before said it was on $300 plus. So Bill, if you want to pull up, this is the new cam drop-off.
Sorry, can you enter your statement again?
Bill Fee with Curduchian Associates, Relenskip Architects, and we're working with Marshall Lee Architects as a sub-insider. Marshall Lee is the architect in responsible charge of Cam Lee, Marshall Lee. So I'm his sub-insider. Relenskip Architects specializes in designing athletic fields, public schools. This, this project is about an acre of turf grass. We're gonna regrade the field to make it a little flatter. It's a three percent slope now, we're gonna make it a two percent slope, so it's a little more gentle. It drains, if you look at this drawing here, it drains from the left to the right downhill towards the North Bay Children's Center. There's kind of a wet spot at the bottom of the hill between the lawn and the North Bay Children's Center, and some of that water in the big storm keeps flowing right at the North Bay Children's Center, so causing some dry rot on this building. So part of our plan is to shrink the overall size of the field to save water, more water conserving, and then have an asphalt perimeter walking path. So currently, it's a decomposed granite walking path, and we'll have a minimum six-foot wide walking path made of asphalt, so a little more weather protection. And then on the top of the drawing is where the solar panels are, the playground. There's a play area, and on the field side of that, we'll have a 15-foot wide asphalt running track that we strike for four lanes so the children can run springs for physical education. And then there's a little ballway around the field. So what we've kind of done is just kind of, we still have a soccer field in the middle. We still have the same two backstops, we pull them out of the ground, sell them, put them back. And the perimeter of the path gets a little more naturalistic, like up on the left-hand side where the dark shading is. That's, that's a redwood grove over on the left, and it kind of blends into a oak woodland. And so we're gonna let that nature, just kind of mulch there, and sort of let nature come back, kind of like your beautiful forest painting spine. And then to the lower right, that's gonna be more a wildflower mountain, so. And those are areas where the children can kind of create gardens, so that's kind of... So it'll be a little easier to maintain. We'll have a new irrigation system as well, and we're gonna have an irrigation pump. One of the problems that we think we're having is that you don't have enough water pressure. You only have about 50 PSI, we need to tweak that to 60 PSI. So you want to boost the pressure so that we have enough pressure at the heads. And then we have a uniform distribution, it'd be more water conserving that way.
And the pump is pretty, it's like a $20,000 item.
It's like a $20,000 item.
So adding a pump, that's part of what, when we look at this, that's part of what's adding to the cost, but at the same time, we're gonna put $300,000 or $400,000 into investment. We want to make sure we can maintain by having enough water pressure.
And then there's issues about gophers, and all of these, and on and on.
Oh, she's going up there.
So, what's your plan?
We're actually looking at doing some aggressive remediation, gopher remediation, and paying on some of the work.
So for trapping, trapping release? Yeah, we should have the video, we should have the video to add. And so basically, the soccer field that we could potentially rent out, and we used to use Cherry Valley quite a bit, and I think... Estelle used to use it and pay, I mean, is it...
Well, this isn't gonna be synthetic, this is gonna be just sod. So it's gonna take a couple of months, you know, it's actually gonna be on the service for a couple of months. We're gonna need to work with the school site, because you want the sod to take. Back to the gophers, we also want to make sure that we have a maintenance contract to maintain because gophers, you can get rid of them, and they will actually come back. So part of this is doing gopher mediation up front, and then it's gonna have a good, we need to have a good plan in place to keep, every time a gopher comes in, we're on it, and we're able to trap it and get rid of it. So do your... So to your point about gophers, it's not just how we get rid of them actually, it's how do we keep them not, not down.
And the site has weighed in on this proposal?
They've, they've participated in some of the meetings with you.
Yes. We met with the school principal.
Are there any issues about having kids running on asphalt? I mean.
Kids running on asphalt, just questioning, are there any issues with that?
The decomposed granite, you could say is a little softer, but actually it's, it's pretty hard too. You get a more all-weather surface with the asphalt, the decomposed granite is a road. You kind of get ruts in it and it's hard to maintain. So the all-weather track is a beautiful surface too. And this budget is not that affordable. So I think it's a good, it's a good.
So it's kind of a compromise?
It's like kids running on a blacktop. I mean, if you're playing basketball, if you're, it's not like the kids running on a blacktop.
The asphalt is painful.
When we had staff here at our last meeting regarding this, that was actually their preference.
Was asphalt?
Yeah, probably over a decomposed granite.
So we'd like to move forward with this project, but we wanted to come back to the board to make sure that, you know, you're aware that it is coming in at the estimates. And the estimates does include quite a bit of escalation. So we're hoping the bids will come in at or above or maybe just below the 20 mark. But again, we'll know on Tuesday and then we'll be bringing this back to you on the 23rd.
And this is a bond project?
Yeah.
That we've been talking about for years.
Yes.
Now, I always think we have a choice. We need to go ahead.
Our recommendation is to move forward. We wanted to make sure that the board had comfort level with a 420,000 dollar budget.
From 150?
150 was probably not necessarily a realistic amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was it. There's just a few more. So Pedalima High School.
Oh, sorry.
It's going to be a visit summer. So Pedalima High School, the track and field project is moving forward. We've already received comments on fire life safety and media accessibility. And we've received, well, they're, they're over 50% done reviewing the structure of it. So we're actually hopeful that we may have DSA approval in June. We have to bid and maybe start as early as, end of July, early August, which is about a month in advance of what they were doing. So we have met with the school site about 10, 12 days ago. And we have another meeting on the 17th where the architects are going to come back out, meet with coaches, you know, kind of make sure that everybody's aware of what the details of the track and field project are. And making modifications, final modifications, where it's like, does this gate need to be here or doesn't need to be here? Those types of things. So that project is moving forward. The whole project is about a month behind, maybe five weeks behind. So that is in DSA right now, running until the February. We're tracking it. I know Dave has, Dave actually been tracking it on the track of, DSA has tracked everything or contracted progress. And it looks like it is scheduled to start review. Science Building. So you've probably heard about the Science Building roof. So Cam, actually Cam and his associate Ed Sheeran have been doing, they're engineers assessments of the Science Building roof. And we believe that we are going to have to go and re-group that building, maybe have to do some extensive work. We're still in the process of analyzing and assessing the roof.
There's various soft spots and tomorrow, Ed is coming over and they're going to cut cores where the soft spots are to find out if the plywood or the working structural section is good or not good. The part that we did find was not good, so it's a negative.
We actually have some trusses that are potentially impacted. So that's the level, at least in one section of the roof. So they've actually cut open, what, 20 by 20?
Ten by ten.
10 by 10 for a section to take a look inside at a worst area. So water basically got under the coating and then bubbled, or did bubble water and etc. So that is, stay tuned because, yeah, we didn't find this out until what, about a month ago, three weeks ago? So this is kind of a big deal and we will probably be looking after sources. You know, we also have the water nutrition, the water nutrition project. That's where the deck, you know, the deck has been compromised. We're working with QKA and their consultants on coming up with a water treatment solution. And so we're hoping to have some of that worked out starting in July as well. We'll do just sections of the deck coating, the worst section. And then there's some excavation and some water nutrition work on the back concrete walls. We're also doing some depth valve repairs, which will be able to help. That's kind of it for the summer.
So when, when does that, does that come back to the board at all with that?
We can definitely have them come back and.
Unless I need to.
I'm just wondering what the rest of the process is in regards to letting them know. The board or the school site?
The board. To update the pool community.
So I know that.
Part of that isn't exactly the site.
Part of the meeting on the 17th is going to include the pool conversation. So the principal, actually David is here. So I don't know if you want to add to that, but part of, when QKA comes out, they're actually going to review some of the pool project plans as well and start reviewing some of the designs. We can definitely come back to board once we're closer to having DSA approval because depending on when it happens, it impacts the schedule. That's why it's so critical. We're trying to get breaking ground on the track and field as early as possible because if we delay too much, you saw weather this year, that can have serious delay in the project. You can't be hoping that the pool. We can come back and update you on the schedule and what we've created some schedules.
Next is 7.3 LCFF Fund in Equity. Is that, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll start it. So I received a really interesting letter on the 17th from the Director of Budget and Accounting from East Whittier School District. And it was sent on behalf of their Board's President. And what they did was they did an analysis of all the school districts in California that receive LCFF funding and identified 200 school districts that are in the same funding predicament that they're in East Whittier. More specifically, considerably below the state average. And they used the term, they used the number of $500. If we were receiving $500 per student less than the state average, you kind of fell on this list. And so they sent us a letter and the letter was about, what are we going to do about that? How are we going to, to come together to have some type of a strategy, whether that's legislation, lawsuit, tax reform, something to address a growing inequity? As many of you are familiar with, we shifted from a, a different funding formula to the LCFF and it, it's not a fully funded model. And as it's, becomes more fully funded, the gap only grows greater and greater between some districts and other districts. And so what we've got here is essentially what we did was we took their long table and said, well, what does it, what does it mean for us specifically? And so I'll kind of walk you through it. And so there is 184 elementary school districts in California, just elementary school districts that are on the LCFF model. There are more than that elementary school districts, but they're on basic aid, on a basic aid model. Or they're part of a unified school district in K-12. And so the average school district is receiving, elementary school district is receiving $8,875 per student. And we're receiving $8,096 per student. And what that means for us, if we were just average, and I'd like to think that we're more than average, it's a loss of 1.5 million a year of opportunity. The high school district, there's only 53 high school districts and the average is $9,750 per student. In our district, that's $8,948. Now, that's a double whammy for us because most of our students come from the high school district. And so the loss for us is $4.1 million off of the average. As you can tell, I added just to see it, that unified school districts receive $9,380, which is significantly more than we would be receiving at either scenario. And the statewide average, including unified school districts, is $9,320. And you'll notice that most of the districts in the state are unified and there's 492 school districts that fall under the LCFF model. So then it begs the question, because when you go down the list and you can pull up the names, you can get a list of all of these, if you go to the website, onto this agenda online, you'll see the spreadsheet. It kind of begs the question, there are some districts that aren't on there. And so for example, Old Adobe is not on there. So you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are several districts in the state that, that are considered basic aid districts. And basic aid seems like this very complicated thing, but it's really not. Every district in the entire state, whether they're basic aid or not, does a local control formula and calculation. And through that calculation, they come up with what is their target funding in 2021? What did they get in the current year or last year? And then what is the gap funding they're getting for the current year based on whatever the percentage of state says they're funding? That comes up with what is our entitlement for this year? We then take that amount, every district in the state, we take that amount and we compare it to our local property tax collections that we get, secured taxes, INLU taxes, et cetera. And if our INLU or if our calculations shows that we're entitled to 40 million and our local tax collections are 25 million, the state backfills 15 million with state aid. If our entitlement is 40 million and we get 50 million in local taxes, we keep the difference. And that's what throws you into basic aid status. So it's not a choice. We don't get to choose whether we're basic aid or not basic aid. It's simply what does our entitlement look like compared to our local tax revenues that we're entitled to? And does it exceed it? Now, a lot of districts are on the cusp and they kind of go in and out. Because remember, our entitlement is based on student enrollment or ADA, right? So if we're collecting average daily attendance and that's what's driving our funding, if our ADA fluctuates from year to year and we're very close, if that's 40 million and local property tax is a 39.5 million, right? And if we drop a little bit, we might go in and out of basic aid. There are those districts that are in cusp and they have very unique challenges related specifically to cash flow and some other things. So we're clearly well entrenched in local control. Our property taxes are not close. When we bring the adaptive budget, I'll point that out to you. I'll show you kind of what the difference is when you look at that state aid line, which is the very first line of our budget.
So I think that the, there are a number of issues here.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about why there's such a disparity, a discrepancy?
I would.
Yes.
I would like to.
So under the LCFF, remember we went from this former revenue limit model where we did these very complicated calculations. There were about 12 exhibits that tied into it. And it stemmed from the '71, '72 Serrano Priests where we converted from an old funding model into the revenue limit funding model. And so there were districts, when they converted, that ended up being high wealth districts, which were well, well above the statewide average and then some that were well below the statewide average. And over time, there was equalization, there was other things that came about. When the LCFF came in, but there was still this huge amount of disparity between the haves and the have-nots. So when the LCFF came in, it was supposed to be the great equalizer. But the challenge is there were districts that were so far above what their LCFF calculations were. They had this whole harmless agreement where those districts continued to get that amount far above what the LCFF calculations were. And so the, the theory was everybody was supposed to come up. But because of how we've been funded and because of how it works, because there was lots of different fixes legislatively, because those districts weren't getting additional new money, that, that process has taken far longer. So that's a piece of why there's still this huge disparity between what people get in some districts and what others like ours get. A lot of it had to do with that original whole harmless, that in 2012, 13, whatever you got, that was your minimum. So even if that was 20 million higher than your 40 million entitlement, you still got that 60 million. Does that make sense? Kind of? Kind of?
Do you have agenda online up right now? Can you go to that 7.3 and pull up the districts list, just so that you put the first page on? This is what I was referring to. So, it's going to be hard to see, but there we go. Just pull, yeah, just go to the top 10. That's fine. So this is goes, this goes on for, it's a rank, there's a ranking. And the ranking is for 1 to 492. And we are quite a ways down in the ranking. We're actually, I can tell you, Pedalima Joint highest, highest 279. And Pedalima City's 409.
Oh my God.
So, but what I want to point out is this to what Chris said. Say, I'm just talking. When, when we changed over to this funding formula, what was being touted in all of this was, oh, there's all this new money. We're getting all this, there is new money that's coming. But where it's not coming to us, our funding formula is very, very close to what it was before the great crash in 2008. It's a little above that. This isn't finished. When this finishes out, El Monte, Delano, Wasko, LA Unified are going to be, they're estimating right now $4,000 more per kid than other districts in California. That's the average. And we're not the average, even at the average. And so where the pushback is on this, and it's been, it was a pushback immediately. People were thrilled at the, when LCFF came out, just anything, any kind of money would have been better than what we had before. The pushback now is by, by and large, super intense throughout the California, particularly us, the 200 of us, is we, we believe and we agree with the governor that there are school districts and there are schools that have greater needs than other school districts and schools. We do believe that giving everybody the exact same amount of money is inherently inequitable. The issue is the amount. It's too great. It's too big of a jump that even right now, that El Monte should not be receiving 11, well, how much more than, than Pedalima High School? You know, 3,000, $3,500 or whatever it is more. That's too much. That's too much per kid because we're talking about in that scenario, that's, I don't even think about what, what the quick, anybody want to do a quick math on that? What's, what's just 3,000? How many students do we have at the, at high school district?
Eighty years, about 5,000.
17.5 million.
So, 3,000?
3,000.
Well, he had 30, he had 3,500.
I did 35. What do you want?
Well, 3,500 difference is they're receiving 17.5 million more dollars every year than we are. And we think that's unfair. So the question now is what do we do about this? So our first step was we had, we, we were asked forward, were invited to a meeting with Senator McGuire on this single issue to talk specifically to this. Chris attended. Was the only CBO that was, I was able to get into attendance, which is probably the most important person to be in that meeting to talk about that. What information did you, were you able to gather from that?
Well, I think the, the conversation with Senator McGuire was not only this, it was also the pension costs and if, if, how we could advocate for relief because all districts are struggling with pension costs at some level. And this just exacerbates it for various districts depending on the level of funding we're receiving. But basically the answer is we've been in an eight, in an eight-year recovery, although it was a very slow recovery. And that we're looking at to the future, this recovery is probably coming to an end and we're probably looking at, albeit not as deep, but another downturn, if you will. But that. But that, there really isn't any relief on site, or in sight, that the governor at this point isn't looking at, really, the governor or the legislature is looking at, talking about even pension costs, and providing relief for public education. And I'm not even sure this is on their radar.
Oh, it is. The conversation that's taking place now at California School Boards Association is regarding specifically this item. I do think that, at some point, and this is what we're talking about, there's a Leadership 40 group, which is, there's 40 superintendents in Sonoma County. We're having the conversations about, who are our state legislators? Who do we need to, we need to start working on this, this issue, this is too great. Sonoma County is a massive loser in this. There are some winners in that, you'll see Roslin at rank 61. So...
You mean Roslin?
Yeah, Roslin, sorry. It's, well, you're not gonna see it on there. It's, they're 10,000 per kid. So, it's, but most of the county is on below the average list. And for us, it's, yeah, it's a significant, it's a significant chunk.
And part of the challenge is that, with the supplemental grants, districts up to 55% of free, the unduplicated count, get 20% of the base in addition. But the districts, like LA Unified, and some of those where you see the percentages are really high, they're getting concentration grants, which are 50% of the base. So they actually get 50% of the base, plus the supplemental 20% of the base on top of the base, for those eligible students. And so that's part of what's then continuing this huge level of inequity.
So is part of the base free and reduced lunch, is that part of what they base it on?
So the unduplicated count, not the base, but the unduplicated count is, if I'm a student, and I'm an English language learner, and I'm low income, I count one, so that's why it's called unduplicated. And it includes foster youth. So those are the unduplicated counts that drive the supplemental concentration grants. The base, everybody gets the same, based on your grade span. So, K3 gets one base, including all charters. 4-6 gets a different level of funding. 7-8 gets a different level, and then 9-12 gets a higher level.
So we're talking about these grants that are put on top of that?
The supplemental and the concentration grants add 20%, up to, you know, and then over 55% of your unduplicated, you get 50% of the base on top of it. So that's what's driving, in large part, now, these huge inequities between, and you'll see, it's based on the ones that have the high unduplicated percentages. So those supplemental concentration grants are too big, that's the challenge. The base should be higher.
So we've had conversations with, I've had conversations with Senator Dodd's office, he's part, is a big part of Sonoma County, but he just cuts through a little bit of Pedalina. He has our Pengrove, our Pengrove group. But, it's gonna require a concerted activity.
Did you get a feeling for how either one of them felt? Wasn't Senator McGuire, could he start his career as a school board trustee?
He was, he was actually one of our, he was also a county supervisor for nine years, and a big supporter of education. A big supporter of education.
So he should have some background in how this budgeting and, what did they, did they just, did they propose?
The governor's very, the governor is trying to fund his high-speed rail. That's what, he wants to complete, he wants to get that completed before he's done, and he wants to get the funding formula done before he's out. So, we'll see. Yeah, it's not...
So what's, so what's the Leadership 40 planning to do? What are your next steps?
Our next steps, our first step was to coordinate and set our meeting with Senator McGuire to see, get a lay of the land, but there hasn't been a follow-up meeting yet since then, so.
It sounds like they're thinking about getting some field trips with school board members and superintendents, and hopefully CEOs, to go to Sacramento, and to get an audience with legislature and/or the governors. I mean, really, it's going to Sacramento.
What's interesting about it is, is when you have a conversation, if you're fortunate enough to have a conversation with somebody that's working in the Assembly or the Senate, what you find is, when you start talking about pension reform, or you start talking about this, this is the first time some of them have ever heard about this. That, they're so filtered through aides that are, you know, how they get their information, that there's a real information, there's a real information gap. And so, either that, or they're, but they do seem to be asking good questions. You know, and, you know, we're gonna have, this is, I guess the best thing that we heard was, this has to be a bigger, more pressing issue before the legislature will move on it. The problem you've got right here...
Can we take all our blue shirts and our blue...
Number five, quite frankly, number five is your biggest problem. Just because, if LA Unified's okay, so is the state.
But one of the things Senator McGuire did say, is that there needs to be a meeting between the North and the South of California, to come together to say, this is a statewide issue. Because honestly, what Gary pointed out is absolutely on track, which is Southern California is like, oh, okay, sure, fine, I'll profit. Because they're getting a significant amount of the 48% of the state budget that K12 or K14 education represents, it's going to Southern California. So we need to somehow get our colleagues in the South that also have an issue, so that we can have this be more of a whole state issue, and not just a, you know, you have an issue.
Why should they? Because they need someone that are affected.
There's Southern California districts on there, so we need to tap into...
Better affected than we are, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, because the others, why would, why would you speak up if you're kept really nice?
The windfall. That's ridiculous.
I think that there's, I think there's enough, I really do believe that there's enough legislators, legislators out there, that when they actually see the final differential, they'll be able to say, you know what, we need to close that gap a little bit. Because we're talking, you know, a minimal closure for us, I mean, what would be, they would see as minimal, like a $200 shift, would be a significant amount of dollars for us. So it's the, it's just how everything was calculated. And it sounded great when you kind of did this in 2013-14, but now we're actually living it. And now we're almost, we're almost to the end of that cycle, and we're still not seeing, we're not seeing the types of numbers that we should be seeing.
And when is the ADA determined? Each year? So at P2, period two, no, P-bids is our enrollment, which happens the first Tuesday in October. So we just calculated P2, which is usually around the first part of April, and that's what we're funded on. So P2, and that's what we did when we calculated these dollars, the 1.5 and 4.1. We took our P2 ADA times $779 difference in the 802 or 803 per ADA difference, and that's how we came up with those numbers now. There's a little bit of special that's funded on annual, but most are funded on P2.
We don't actually get this money till June.
Well, this money, we're not, this money, we're not gonna get at all.
No, 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 but 17 ADA, do you actually...
We get apportionments, they're called advance apportionments, we get apportionments from the state throughout the years. We get July, August, September. So they do, based on prior year, they're apportioning you. And then, come the February certification, they make adjustments to your spring apportionments to kind of realign you. And then, when we close the books, part of what we do is we true up our final LCFF calculations caps.
And that's not till June, or July, or August, or November?
Okay. Gary, are they working with the advocacy secrets as well? Leadership 40, I think they're working with a legislative advocacy group?
How do I know? This is the first, this is the first real conversation that people are having statewide about this, this particular issue.
Okay, here it is. 7.4, almost skipped you. Presentation, Cliff DeGrasse, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, and Kim Harper, Director of Educational Services, to present an update on the 2017-20 ElCap.
All right, so this is the next, in our continuing updates, as we get to the end of the school year, school year. Kim's been out sick the last couple days, so that's why she's not here. So hopefully she's getting better. Just to recap, our DLT, District Leadership Team, ElCap Development Committee, have been meeting throughout the year. We've had a meeting since the last board meeting, so we want to update you on what's been done. We have one meeting left with our group, and then in June, we're gonna finalize ElCap for public review. Again, ElCap addresses each big priorities. And in the overall process, this is where we're at. So we're 99-point-whatever percentage done with the annual update. That took the bulk of our efforts and time so far this year, just gathering all of the information, all of the metrics, assessing what we've actually done, what we've actually spent. So that was a big chunk of our work. We've more recently been developing our goals and our actions out for next year. So again, these are, going forward, these are based off of our most recent student achievement data, which includes the dashboard information. So, although you won't see that in the annual update, because we had to base that off of the metrics we used to identify before, going forward, we'll be using the data for it. So we're finalizing our actions and goal, our goals, our actions, and our services, and then we'll come for public review and board approval in June. Those are arrows on where we're at and where we're going. Again, this is the different ways we engage stakeholders. At our last working meeting, last Tuesday, we reviewed different stakeholder surveys from different districts that Kim and I both worked in, and had really good, really good working groups and sessions to kind of analyze those. One of them was very thorough, but a little too long, the other one was, was nice and short, but not that adept. So, we're gonna kind of morph those two surveys, and the plan leading to the last meeting was, in the fall of 2017, to roll out our survey as part of our annual update next year, once we implement our new ElCap. Rolling that out right now, between now and June, is just not feasible, so the group decided we're gonna move that off. Again, here are our most recent goals, they haven't changed, but there has been some discussion at the DLT, ElCap group, about updating some of our wording. So I've added the bold italic areas, just so you kind of see the theme. Goal one is basic services, learning environments. Goal two is related to student achievement. Goal three is student engagement. Goal four is parent engagement. One of the suggestions, this came up at one of our prior meetings, and then this is some of the words mentioned that happened at the last meeting. At what point do we want to not say 21st century anymore? And what does that actually mean? So that was brought up by a few teachers there, two meetings prior. And this is just kind of one of the working things, this isn't necessarily set in stone, but something like this, students need access to a regular curriculum and a modern facility classroom environment. So goal four also mentions 21st century citizens, so we may word spend that as well. But that's just a slight modification. On the next part of the ElCap, this is the goal section. So for each goal, we have several actions slash services. And this is the new format, I just wanted to point out a few things, so you're clear. There's two sections at the top, and basically, what we're gonna call this first section is base actions and services, so things we're supposed to provide already. And the way the state words it, it's just proposed. For actions and services, not included as contributing to meeting increased or improved services or, so, base sounds better. So for all actions that are base services under each of the goals, in the new ElCap format, we will list all of those first under each goal, and then we'll move to the supplemental. So you can clearly see the line between what we're supposed to provide, and what is extra, what is supplemental that we're doing to help serve our kids. So this is an example, action 1.1 is a base service. If it were a supplemental, it would be, we would have filled out the second part of the table. And just for later here, and this is a base service, we've modified this service from the previous ElCap, combined a few things. So, it reads, qualified, certified, and classified employees will be hired. Certified staffing for K3 will meet requirements of grade span adjustment. A K3 school set average of 24 to 1. Certified staffing ratios and grade support for 12 will comply with contractual agreements, and then we listed them. So that's just an example of one of them. The next one, 1.4, this is an example of a supplemental, or an increase or improved service or action. So, this was worded slightly, well, I guess it was the same. All first and secondary teachers and as an annual participate in an induction program. So that's, that's an example of a supplemental. You don't have to do that, that's a bonus, that's a perk, it's a supplemental thing we do above the base. Another example, action 2.5, this is another supplemental action. The Spanish program particularly that we offer at elementary, and some of the Spanish at the junior highs are additions to the base program. So we've reworded this slightly. So, in addition to the Spanish 1 through 8, the Spanish pathway beginning at junior high schools, through the high schools, additional Spanish offerings were being funded. So we fund 1.8 FTE for elementary Spanish offered at two different schools. We fund Spanish immersion sections funded at Pennellwood Junior High, and that includes some content area boxes that are taught Spanish. And then we also fund Spanish for native speakers at the junior highs and high schools. So this was, kind of reworded how this was, I mean, a pass goal. And on the new format, in that middle area, you can see, this focuses on English learners, foster youth, low-income, or unduplicated students. It reaches school-wide, and specific schools where this action takes place are listed there. So, if it's an LEA-wide goal, you just mark that box, all schools. If it's specific to schools, you'll see it noted there. So these are just a, just a few examples of updated actions. So, as you, as we shared, ElCap with you, you'll be able to identify what's base, which is what supplemental, and they're separated, clearly there's a line. So some of the, our next steps, we're kind of finalizing actions and services. There's a few things we still need to add, that we have been funding, they are supplemental, but they've never been articulated in the ElCap prior. So, for example, elementary music, that needs to be articulated in there. We will continue to use cell tests and scoring in the gap year of the new assessment coming, the ElCap. We can, we can still use that to help identify kids, so that's an additional thing we're gonna do. We do help fund partially some of the alternative at online credit recovery, that's not articulated anywhere. We're gonna participate in California Health Kids Survey through WestEd next year, that's a cost that we have to add. Without that, we don't get any of that data. So those are just a few things, and you'll see, as we share the ElCap with you, there are quite a few things that have been supplemental, but we haven't articulated, that are now in there. So they're not necessarily new, they're just clearly visible now. And, just one last distinction I'll make, not everything in the ElCap that's quote-unquote supplemental, please LCFF supplemental funded. So it will clearly denote how it's funded. So, our induction program, we've been funding that out of Title II. So that is a supplemental thing, that's an additional source, it's not from our general fund. There are things that we fund out of Title I, which things that we fund out of college readiness, block grant, I mean, there's things we fund out of education effectiveness. So those are supplemental as an addition in partial tax. But, you'll clearly see the difference between the LCFF supplemental and these other supplemental So that's it. Questions?
One of the things I think, when we try to get some more parents involved in the committee, is, I think we should think about having like an introduction bail cap. I think it's hard with the walk, we had a lot of parents that were there the first night, and they never came back. I think because, when we start diving in and we start talking about it, it's so... I think because when we start diving in and we start talking about it, it's so confusing, just like that. Supplemental to what we're supposed to be offering, not necessarily meaning funded by supplemental dollars. What are supplemental dollars? What is... So I think if we want to get parent involvement, and they were younger parents, parents of younger children, and so it would behoove them to learn this stuff and follow the process and learn about it, because their kids hopefully will be in for a long time in our district. But I, you could tell by the questions they're asking, they weren't really sure what they were walking into, which, I mean, none of us were. It's taken me a long time to understand it as well. So I know, I think...
Let me add, I think three meetings ago, maybe, three or four meetings ago, we had some great input from the group there about how we can better reach stakeholders going forward. So we had a whole list of suggestions that we want to roll out.
We definitely think we shouldn't let somebody, not shouldn't let, we shouldn't expect them to be able to follow and keep up, walking into the ElCap meeting, and we're just going to pick up and start talking about, okay, so here we are, and this is what we did, and this is where we're going, right? I mean, so they need to have like an intro hour, maybe beforehand or something, to really understand, not only understand the document, understand that it's a moving document every year, and understand how it actually plays into how money is spent and how it affects their child's classroom. Because it's really kind of a big concept if you aren't dealing in the language. And once you get it, it's hard to go back and remember how confused you were when you first looked at it, but it hasn't been that long, so.
Yeah, well, if you recall, one of the, one of the great suggestions was to have, you know, to basically involve sites and special administrators, where every time we have a captive audience, we're sharing some type of uniform message, you know, albeit short in grief, but related to this, whether we call it ElCap, whether we call it All Eyes on Learning, like some districts have done, to take advantage of every opportunity. Then people will become more familiar with it, it won't be the secret from this one group.
Right.
But you bring up an interesting idea, maybe some type of boot camp for new reps who haven't been involved before.
That's what I understand, so don't get discouraged. Any other questions?
Well, I just, I've been going to most of the meetings, and Kim and Cliff have done an excellent job. It is a tough concept to comprehend, and we need to do a better job too, of getting it back to the sites and share with the staffs at each site. And I know there's supposedly reps coming from each site, and they're supposed to bring it back to their site. I don't know if we as a district can make sure that that's happening.
Follow the principles.
Following the principles, that they're sharing it at their staff meetings, because it really, we do need input from the sites, and just making sure that the goals are being met, and that the services are, in theory, happening or understood by most people. So it's a difficult, overwhelming document, and you guys have done a nice job of having regular meetings, and, you know, sometimes they're not very well attended, unfortunately. I mean, I get it, it's during the evenings, it's hard for people to... So, you know, I don't know how I can get people more involved, but you guys have done a nice job.
Yeah, that, well, thank you, but that concern has been shared by committee members as well.
Maybe some write-up at the end, that everyone knows, again, to remind themselves that take them outside of, I know the language, and I have to make sure everyone...
But it's also coordinating with principals, you know, not everyone has set aside time at staff meeting for these type of committee reports.
Right.
If that existed before, it's definitely not uniform now, it's inconsistent.
And maybe letting them know, like, this is going to take a good, people need at least seven, ten, fifteen, whatever minutes to go over, you know, what an update is, what it looks like. Anyway. Anything else? Comments or questions? Okay. Okay. Presenting the present people. Are you okay to push through about like a minute? No one needs to rush through. Okay, all right. Number eight, and comments from the public. Mr. Hartman, come on down. Oh, hold on, just come on down, but while you're coming, let me look. Okay, give it just a second, because we're changing the amount of time everybody gets. Yes, you have to. Okay, so hold on just a second. Stop, 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 and that. These are the three. It's the same, right? And that's the same, and that's the same, and that's the same, and that's the same. Body secrets, huh? Okay, I'm going to have to read the statement real quick, I was asked to make the statement. Bear with me, my apologies for making you come up with a stand-up. An extra minute here. Okay, for public comment, our government code section, under government code section 54954.3, A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on the items of interest, item or items of interest, providing it relates to such a matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy BP9323, each speaker's allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy, BPAR1312.1, specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate the value input from the public. I think everybody here is a regular, just in case. While people are speaking, we don't boo, hiss, or applaud, because we don't know the opinion of somebody else that in the audience that may want to speak differently. Plus, it also takes us a lot longer to get people to comment if we have to take an extra minute to quiet back down. So it's twenty minutes for comment, four minutes. I think, I think we'll just run this one a few minutes over, so everyone can have their four-minute time. Take it away, sir. Thank you for being the patient.
My name is Darrell Hartman, I'm the workability coordinator and teacher for the school district for the next nineteen days. I'm retiring in nineteen days, but who's counting, right? Anyways, I wanted to honor my co-retirees at the two high schools. So I've been in the district for over thirty years, and people I'm going to mention tonight also have been in for over thirty years. So the first two are the dynamic duo from Casa Grande, Rick Pillsbury and Grace Cottis. So they are the act-dead team for the past thirty years. They're the science people at Casa Grande. They, you know, won championships, state championships, world championships. They're finally retiring, and they're going to be a big loss, they'll be irreplaceable at Casa Grande, but wonderful, wonderful people, they're going to go travel and enjoy life. We have Arlene Bernie, who is our band person, another excellent person. She goes to Disneyland every year. I don't know if, I don't know if she likes her, now after thirty years she hates it, but she goes every year. Her band wins all these competitions, they go throughout Sonoma County, playing all kinds of events. Again, she's going to be greatly missed. We have the amazing Harry Frank, who is our art teacher, artiste individual. Again, thirty years, he's the teacher at Casa Grande who attracts the creative students. So, you know, a lot of these students aren't, you know, too academic, but they're really creative mode. I go into his class, and I'm not an art person, I always expect to see the kids talking and not doing much artwork. I go in his classroom, and it's silent, the kids are so working on their individual projects, it's just amazing. Also, he does private art shows, and I don't know if he wants you to know that, but he is a handyman, and he might need some work when he retires and make a lot of money, so... Finally, I'd like to honor our one peddler of my school, retiree Connie Williams. Connie is here. Connie, again, over thirty years, she is an amazing person, because when the teachers are teaching, Connie is going and doing research on the internet, and she's sending links and things for every teacher at the school in every subject area. And again, she's certified in about anything you could be certified in the library area. Again, she's, you know, won awards, and just... Quickly, I want to pivot, okay? A few more minutes. Okay, my, my, my strong point, like, my phrase is perception is reality, okay? And so our perception, teacher's perception of what's going on with the school district, obviously, is not very, you know, positive. In the past week, I've been really discouraged, I was kind of hopeful two weeks ago, but we did this work to rule, and we started getting these emails from the district saying that's illegal. I don't consider myself illegal, I don't know if you guys do, but I, you know, I was really offended when I got those emails, and I didn't think that that was the way to bring this district together. What happened to the word compromise? That's one thing that's really getting me. At the federal level, that doesn't happen anymore, and it's starting to trickle down to the state and the local levels. And it just really discourages me to see that, you know, people are just, you know, in the power, I mean, I'm not saying you guys are, but I'm just saying, it's just trickling down, and people have to work together, and it just... Work to rule, we had over ninety-six percent participation last week, and I have to say, we are the only business in, that I know, that gives up our breaks and gives up our lunches to do our job, work with our kids, and do something we love. And I don't know anybody in the profession that's out there. And I just want to finish it by just saying, as Rodney King would say, let's just get along.
Eric, come on down.
I have mine. So I'm Eric Smith, I'm a teacher at San Antonio High School. I was going to show this up there, but it's too long. So I just, I wanted to talk about alternative education, and I wanted to back up the students who came in today. I have three pages of notes here, but I won't use them. The, I looked at EdCode, talked about alternative education, it's a pretty broad description, but it really, it stressed early on that it's a place for students to feel valued. And I think that the students who were here today, if you had met them two years ago or when they first walked onto our campus, there's no way you could have gotten them to come here. The changes that they have made over their time at our site is really incredible, and you don't realize that unless you've seen the growth from the beginning. Secondly, in terms of the school, a couple of things that I have concerns about going into the upcoming year are, site, the budget itself, it's based, you know, in terms of ADA and all of that stuff. From my understanding, the numbers are set in September, or determined in September, and over the course of the year, we'll add approximately forty students to our site. And so by the end of the year, we're impacted completely differently than we are at the beginning of the year. And how those dollars get distributed, I think, should be reevaluated at some point, so that it's more accurate to what we're doing. I have, the, the final thing, and this would look great right there, but the, we're theoretically losing a staff member this year, and it's going to have a huge impact on class size at our site. And our students do not do well in a large classroom setting, and it's one of the big reasons that they ended up at our site. And I have the numbers to show what my class looks like in any grading period between, I have one class this year, it's twenty students, my average score in that math one class is forty-seven percent. Granted, there's some, you know, under twenty percents in there that skew the numbers, but I have a fourteen-person class there at sixty-two percent. And if I go back and look at all my math one and business math classes, like two per grading period, in all, we have six grading periods, so in all of those opportunities, in only two, two times did the bigger class outperform the smaller class. The smaller class far and away does better than the bigger classroom size. And I know that's the case in all of education, and we have trouble dealing with that from a financial perspective. But our students aren't the type of students who self-direct very well and are going to be impacted, I think, more, although that's not fair to say, I think our students are going to be greatly impacted by losing a staff member. Their ACEs scores, their, all of these things that have led them to where they are now is going to be felt deeply by, by losing a staff member on our campus.
Could you clarify how we staff the AltEd? Is it contractual number and...
So the contract says it's...
Let me just clarify a question.
The contract for AltEd is twenty to one with a prep, so plus a blue factor in the prep period. But we use supplemental funds to actually reduce that significantly, and so even with, I currently, San Antonio has eight point eight, a seven point eight FTE that the district funds, I think there's a point two that the site funds. And so reducing it by one will keep them at around seven FTE. And we actually do allocate funds based on what we project their annual enrollment to be, not what their enrollment is in the fall. So we staff them for the year, not, not for just the fall, because we know that they're going to grow anywhere from thirty to forty students up a year.
So what's the current average class size at San Antonio?
Well, we currently have about ninety students, and so they have it at eight FTE, so... Plus a prep rate, it's a factor, and a one point two.
Twelve, average of twelve. So we're well beyond the contractual number of twenty to one.
Okay, Susan Smith. Come on down.
Hey, Sarah. So earlier this evening, I ran across a conversation I'd like to share. Just outside this room, a young man was trying to figure out where his night class was. I asked him to show me the email he got, turns out he should have been at San Antonio. The other district employee talking to him said it was only a few minutes away, he could still make it on time. And then the poor kid said, I'm going to have to call for a ride. The district employee said, I'll take you. That's why I work here. That's why I'm safe here. That's why we need an equitable solution for the current negotiation issues. Thank you.
I'm Tom Griffin, I teach at Casa Grande. In twenty-six years of teaching in Pedaluma schools, I've seen a lot of ups and downs. I have never seen the formal relations between the district and its teachers at such a low level. We have witnessed behaviors and statements that are more appropriate to the dysfunction in Washington than to a local community, a school community focused on its students. And energy has been inevitably withdrawn from the students. This is heartbreaking. We are all agreeing on the major issues, the resolution of a structural deficit, the retention of an effective teaching force. These issues are commensurate only on the dimension of time. The creation of a structural deficit has not been the work of one year. It will not be resolved in one year. The creation of an effective teaching force has been the work of many years, and it could be easily and immeasurably set back by the events of a single year. The district has indicated that when all is said and done, it might be possible to make a slight concession to the concerns of teachers. If this could be more than a pious wish, more than an earnest hope, but a real commitment, I think we could see a way out of this impasse and free the energies of all of us to do the work we love, the education of Pedaluma students.
Amanda, are you still here?
I'm still here.
Who is going to be left? Frank, I want to thank you for asking good questions, hard questions, frequently, about how to be sure our schools are able to function. Gary, I want to thank you for looking for solutions at the state level, but I'm worried that the efforts may not be soon enough. Phoebe, I thank you for asking questions, I hear you asking them often as well. Your kids go to school here, how long will you keep them here if our schools begin to fail? Mike is not here, but I taught his beautiful daughter Cassie, she was a delight to have in class. Sherry, our kids go to the same school, I know you care. I know, I see you, I see all the hours you put in, the extra time you put in to make our schools successful. You're exactly the kind of parent that makes this school, this district, a great school to work in. And it's gonna be hard to replace these teachers. Ellen, I voted for you because I know you're a teacher, I know you work with my sister out of Tamalis. And I figured, as a teacher, you might understand and value the contributions that teachers make. But who's gonna be left? I've been on hiring committees, and it's hard to recruit people. We lose good people in those schools all the time because they take jobs to other places not that far away to get paid more money. They can't afford to live in this town at the rates that we're paying them. As a parent, I worry that our schools are not going to have an awesome teaching staff that we currently have. Because the young teachers can't afford to live here, the teachers who've been here are starting to ask themselves, "Why are we doing this?" This is my fourth year as a teacher in this district, and over two of those years, I have not been working under a contract. I don't know how long I can do this. My daughter asks me, "Please be a teacher while I'm still in school." I want to share with you a letter from another grandparent who wrote this. She wrote, "I got ever so teary-eyed, excuse me, this evening when I realized we are down to our last four years at Grant Elementary School, four weeks, excuse me. It has been ten wonderful years, and I am massively grateful for all the wonderful teachers and administrators that have guided our little family through the primary education landscape. From our first day with Jeanette RC to our last with Leslie Irig, and every teacher in between, eternal thanks to each and every one of you." This is the contribution that teachers make to these schools. Without these teachers, people will not come. If you want to know how do we increase our enrollment, it's keeping and recruiting, retaining these teachers. I make my plea to you all personally tonight, because this, this is personal. This is our children. This is about our kids. Who will be left for them?
Tess Woods.
Woods. Hello. My name is Tess Woods, and I'm a senior at Casa Grande High School. And I'm here to talk about the recent work to rule. In my personal opinion, that was one of the greatest things that teachers could possibly do. It not only showed us, very straightforward, how much teachers impact us, but it also showed us how cold the campus could feel without them. In that week, I had nobody to go to. And that was really, really difficult. But I knew that was because there was some higher power keeping them from connecting with their students because there was something wrong. Teachers have been there for me my entire life, and they will continue to be there for me, and I hope to remain friends with some of my teachers that I've had in the past. And I've seen some of the teachers that I've had here, like, hang this little bit, let's see. They've given me an experience that I will never, ever, ever forget, and I will never want to forget. And that is something that's priceless for me. That's not something that's priceless for them. That's something that they do deserve to get good pay for. Because I'm seeing that a lot of my teachers are taking second or even third jobs just to support themselves and their children, and that makes me feel awful. Because if my teachers are doing that, then what's my future gonna be like? They're raising me, they're raising my generation. And if these people aren't getting paid enough to do this, then who's gonna be left to actually do it? They're there because they care, but pretty soon, if it's not sustainable, then the amount of care isn't going to be able to outweigh the little amount of pay that they get. So, I just really hope that you guys can open your hearts and maybe even, like, your pocketbook for the teachers. And give them the financial respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Miss Woods, you do a wonderful job. It takes a lot to come across people like this, so talk about something that you're passionate about. Great public speaker. Ms. Larson.
Andrew's here. I'm Sandra Larson, I teach second grade at Valley Vista, I'm also president of PFT, thirty-four-year resident of Petaluma, while my children are educated, it's my Petaluma City Schools. I'm here tonight to talk about the work to rule. It was very difficult. It was a hard thing to do. Daryl stole my thunder when ninety-six percent, it actually ended up ninety-seven percent of our permanent employees participated. You can talk to any group, that's an incredible percentage. We did not let our temporary or probational teachers participate because we worried about what would happen to them if they did. That's a level of lack of trust that we have right now. You need to know that that's not one week and over. We are committed, and we will do whatever it takes to get the contract that we deserve. And also, I want to say, and I brought this up, this is not just about money, we like to tie things up about how horrible finances are. Personally, I'm over that, I don't care, you need to find it, but that's just me personally. But it's about respect. It's about saying, "Yeah, you know what, we're gonna give you two days to work in your classroom, not with any caveat about a meeting, we're gonna respect that, it probably takes me ten days to do it before I get paid, we're gonna give you professional respect for a meeting. We want you there, so we're gonna tell you a week in advance, and if there's changes, we're gonna get to you." And more importantly, we're gonna treat every employee with respect. If you get transferred, you're not gonna find out via email, someone's gonna come and make a personal connection with you. If there's an issue, we're gonna work it out. I really did try, and as I mentioned today, I can sleep a night knowing when I took over this position, I really tried and thought if we all came to it with respect, it wouldn't end up this way. But we're here. So, I'm asking you to please direct your team to negotiate and give us the fair contract.
Rachel Yanis.
Hi, I'm Rachel Yanis. I was born and raised in Petaluma, I graduated from Casa Grande in 2000. I went away to school in Colorado and I came back. I love Petaluma. I love being a part of this town. I love the community, and I love seeing my family, and I love seeing the students and their families. I'm thirty-five years old. I am not married. I do not have a husband to bring home a second paycheck. I have to do that on my own. I've been teaching for four years. Prior to being a teacher, I worked in the medical field. I worked at Center Hospital, and I worked at Kaiser. But I love being a teacher. I've taught seventh, eighth, ninth, eleventh, and twelfth. Science teacher. I knew that this job was going to be difficult. However, I didn't realize how difficult it was going to be to be a teacher in this town, live in this town. After I've paid my educational debt, I paid all my bills, I have a hundred dollars left in my account, a hundred dollars. I work Saturday school to put extra food on my table, myself. I also have another job downtown. My students see me. I've worked three jobs, and I still show up every day. I have to fight 8:00 AM to grade, to lesson plan, to answer emails. And when the bell rings at 3:00 PM, I continue to unit plan with my physical science team, which I am proud of. I am a link leader with my team of teachers, and that is extra time. How in the world am I supposed to support myself as an adult at the age of thirty-five? We need a cost of living wage, please.
I don't know if I can stop crying. My name is Lee Boyz, I'm the science department chair at Petaluma High, I've taught in this district for twenty-two years, and I'm a four-year veteran teacher. I've been in many districts with many negotiations, so I'm not a stranger to this situation. But budgets can be complicated, they can be confusing, or they can clearly show one's priorities. Communication can be clear and delineated, or it can be convoluted and misleading. Negotiations are always about give and take. However, for the last ten of the twenty-two years I've been in this district, teachers have been giving of themselves, of their time, of their personal budget, to support students and their classes, while the district always seems to need to take, take more to balance their budgets. How does this show us that we are valued and respected? Now, we also seem to be locked in a he-said, she-said blame game, where poor communications to the public and even to teachers lead some to believe that there is an offer on the table, when in fact, there are only promises of considerations, possibly in the fall, with many ifs attached. The idea that when things get better, we can consider teacher salaries is what got us to this place ten years ago. Ten years ago, teachers agreed that to keep this district out of the red, we would wear on our backs a cut to take care of state budgets. We were given a promise that when that money came back, it would go to teachers. When will some of the cuts come out of other people's budgets? When will people who are guaranteed raises in July and for years to come, as I understand it, be willing to take some of that money and put it into teacher salaries? I am not willing to work for an IOU that might be paid in September. It's sad that after twenty-two years in this district, I have to look at other districts that might be able to pay me a wage that I can retire on. I want to feel valued by my paycheck, not just by a pat on the back. Although there are many long-term solutions, such as looking, as Whittier has suggested, for basic aid or for regrouping at the state level, that doesn't help us keep good teachers now, nor does it attract new teachers to this district while we're losing the ones that are leaving.
Hi, I'm Elise Bosberg, I'm a speech pathologist. I work at Petaluma High, I've been there for eighteen years. And I've been at these meetings a lot, and there was one teacher who came and read a beautiful letter that her principal had written, and she was in tears that she was gonna have to leave because she couldn't stay in this district. And then last week, another gentleman who said he had the best student teacher he's ever had, but his saddest moment was when he had to tell her, "Do not take a job with this district." And unfortunately, since the last time I was up here speaking, I've had to join the ranks of these people, and I'm piggybacking on many of these conversations because I have started interviewing with other districts. And speech and language therapists are very difficult to find as our psychologists, and when you don't keep us, you then pay agency fees, which I don't understand why you're willing to pay them so much money and you will not pay us a dime more. And we all have master's degrees or equivalents, credentials, and most of us have licenses. We could all go out and work for agencies and make that higher amount, but then there's no, there's no dedication to the district. I'm very dedicated to this district. I'm very sad that you guys have put me in this position. I'm angry that I have to make a decision as I get these offers, whether I'm gonna stay or go, but I have to take care of myself. I love my colleagues, I love my kids, I love this community, and I really don't want to have to leave. It's become toxic, not only what's going on nationwide with politics, that has been wearing us all out. And as, I believe it was Daryl who said it, or the gentleman from Casa who said it so eloquently, that what's happening here seems to be marrying what's going on in our politics. And it's toxic, it's wearing us teachers out, it's wearing the kids out. And anyway, the offer that, I think, you guys have an erroneous belief that we want just more days, and therefore, we will be paid for those days that we work. It's not that the speech and language therapists want. If we are going to be on a different pay scale, it's because we're making more money, not because we're working more days that you guys are paying us for. And also, we're service providers, and if you give us more days to work and we have nobody to work with, I don't understand the purpose of that. So, anyway, I hope I don't have to come up here again, I hope I don't have to leave the district, and I do hope that there is a contract that we can agree on so those of us who love the district, love the kids, love our colleagues, can stay here.
Connie Williams.
Hello. Yes, I was outed by Daryl. So, I was cleaning, I was cleaning this morning, the last couple of days, and I went through my, I've been going through my files, what am I gonna take away with me, what am I going to leave behind, what can go in the trash? And one thing that is not going to go away, but that is going to go with me, is that I have speeches that I've given to this board, not you personally, but to this board, this body. Because through the years, since nineteen eighty-nine, when I began, libraries and the district has been in some sort of budget crisis or some sort of budget crunch, all the time, it always is. Libraries have always taken the hit first, over pretty much anywhere else, but we've been good. We had a parcel tax. We had many good years where we were able to bring our collections up from "One day a man will walk on the moon," to now where our collections reside, which is that someday, computers will fit in the palm of your hand. So, that means we've moved our collection up from a nineteen sixty-five collection to a nineteen ninety collection. We can do better than that. If we are going to give, provide rigorous, modern facility, we need to keep our libraries open, and we need to have a library team. So, I got to thinking that when one is trying to find answers, when you're researching something, when you're negotiating, and you're stalled in that process, what librarians offer is for you to take a step back and think about the question. So, I thought, "Let's look at the question again. Here's what I think the question might be. How can we best provide opportunities for all students to be challenged and motivated in school so that upon graduation, they will be successful in their future educational endeavors, careers, and community?" I hope that sounds familiar to you, because that's our mission at PCS. So, the question, we continue questioning, you know? Okay, how do we accomplish this? Where do we accomplish it? I say we talk about who can best help us achieve this mission. Standing right in front of you. So, Richard Branson once anecdotally said that he never worried about his clients, he never cared, really, particularly, if the people who boarded his planes, how they were doing, how they were feeling, what they were eating, if they were comfortable. Because he took care of his employees. Because he took care of his employees. He knew that his employees would take care of his clients. And as a result, their business is booming, and he knows that their, excuse me, that they would take care of them, they would answer client questions, they would anticipate needs, and they would innovate for future, for future business benefits. Your best chance of solving this budget crisis, which is also mostly a priority crisis, is your teachers. It is about money. It is about the fact that our 30-year-old something teachers are room-mating it. They are not able to live the adult lives. So that's something to be said. The PCS flow, taking it back a little bit to LCAP. You know, LCAP is changing. If we want to, I see this LCAP document as still being a spending document. I still think it has to do with how many computers we can get, how many TVs we can do. I would like to see shouting, how the town shouted loud and clear through their passage of parcel tax to support their libraries. This is my last presentation to as a full-time site librarian, and I am moving on to other adventures in education. I may be retiring, but I am not, or I may be resigning, but I am not retiring. I'm saddened to see that libraries are once again targeted and the budgets constantly questioned, where the bang for the buck that librarians and libraries bring to their school is actually an enormous savings. So think about the future and how these are the people. You'll just talk to us, and we'll make it happen. Thank you. Okay, that is my last little comment, and I need to take an extra recess. So if you're planning to stay, we'll move back to the next one.
Okay. Only congratulations. When were you going to make that announcement?
I'm talking about tonight.
I mean, seriously.
It's on a personnel.
Was it on? I was looking, I always look at the employee number board. I see yours listed as.
I'm retiring.
That's my greatest.
So have you, do you have a replacement?
This morning, he had.
Oh, good. I'm finding it challenging figuring out what to keep, what to take, what to pause. I'm going through that right now. You know, pictures I've looked at for 30 years. So do I want to take that?
A lot of my work is still good for that.
Oh, there you go.
So I'm still. But yes, it's kind of hard. I'm really tired, by the way.
Yeah, I'm with you.
This is where envy happens. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Give me two seconds, sorry, guys.
Nothing like to break to clear out a room.
I know. Okay, I'm not gabbling. We are reconvening. Item number nine. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members. How that can go through. Okay, so this last meeting we have attended, Pillman Junior High's open house, including Crossroads and Sixth Grade Academy. Crossroads was great.
Yes, it was. It's the talent, good job.
Yeah. I cannot believe how much work she had in that mission, art and maker and everything room. It's very cramped, I understand that. But beautiful stuff. PHS Musical, the Addams Family, McKinley Site Visit, the LCAP District Leadership Team Meeting, San Antonio Open House. At the honor of attending the Scholarship Committee for the Cruising the Boulevard scholarships. Chefs, I'm sorry, was it Chefs of Democracy?
Yes. Casa Grande one for five.
And a visit to the Hatchery at Casa Grande, which is also just an amazing program. Have you been to the Hatchery? You haven't been to Hatchery yet.
No.
Have you been to Hatchery? You've been to Hatchery, okay. I told him I would make sure you both got that and your site visits in the next six months or something. Amazing, whatever, I mean, whatever. It's just so great. He's doing great work over there. Okay, moving on. Number 10, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
A-uh-aye.
That'll be three ayes and a nu-aye. Three ayes and a nu-aye.
An nu-aye.
Okay, number 11, action items. 11.1, Administration of Resources. I'm going to look at this one instead, it's a little too hard for me. There we go. 11.1.1, Resolution 1617-24 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District honoring the contributions of classified school employees to quality education and declaring the week of May 22nd to 26th, 2017 as the Classified School Employees Week.
I was hoping there'd be some.
I know what she just said, she had to go.
To that, but yes, of course, every year we honor our classified employees. And I think if everyone was still here, what I would say is, if there's one thing we can all agree on, it's that our classified employees are the foundation of our success with our students. So we appreciate them, and it's our pleasure to honor them each year.
Definitely. As an action item vote. So I need a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 11.2, Business Services. 11.2.1, Purchase Orders. Motion? That's when you give the board a snack.
Second.
There you go. Okay, any questions or comments or concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 11.2.2, Ratification of Warrant Register for warrants issued between April 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2017 by Petaluma City Schools.
So moved.
Thank you.
I have to recuse my.
Second. Okay, so just recusing. Does anybody have any questions or comments there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so classes, so we've got a recusal and an absent. 12, Discussion Information Items. 12.1, Administration of Resources. 12.1.1, The Williams Settlement Third Quarter Report for the 2016-2017 Visit and Review of Weekend Speech.
No news is good.
No news is good. Okay. Future business, I was going to look really quick at the couple of things that we got tonight. Gary, do you have anything while I'm digging through my mail?
Well, Chris brought up, a lot of this stuff isn't related to facilities, so. Things, as we get information.
We'll bring it back.
We'll be bringing it back either for presentations or updates. And we're all looking at the little DSA tracker.
Like the Santa tracker?
And we should just make sure that at, certainly at Petaluma High, with those two big projects going on, that the meetings are publicized to the coaches, to the public, to the student community.
I know, but people have to each other.
I will say that if it relates to the field and the pool, it's going to overkill as far as meetings.
Well, I was at the last meeting.
Well, but I'm telling you, I was at two full-blown meetings in May.
I just want to make sure the pool one is put out.
I mean, not May.
April?
No, like in November, before the submission. During the day.
But just, when they're making final decisions, I think it's important at this point to just make sure. And I know that Coach Johnson is meeting with someone from the current, just, because I've seen another project that gets done, and everyone said, oh, you picked that Trojan mascot. And everyone looks around the room, and then it has to be redone. We don't want that.
But we know we're doing it.
Very important to get all these decisions that seem trivial at this point, hammer it up.
So I was looking at those, the spreadsheet for all our Floris wonderful activities of the year. And we've got some gaps. But Gary, maybe we've got some people from your staff going.
We do.
What is today?
We have people in.
Today's nice, okay.
Yeah.
So is there anyone on the board that can go to either Valley Vista or McDowell's open house tonight? I definitely can't.
I can't, I'm in rehearsal until 6:00.
But you've got some people going?
We do, and I'm going to try to swing back from the Jack London Awards to get to, because there's Valley Vista and tomorrow's.
McDowell.
But I can tell you, well, keep going and I'll.
Especially since we've got a new principal over at McDowell. We wanted to look around the room, and no one showed up to see that. I'm a great worker, everyone's done.
I didn't go to McDowell last year, I went to Valley Vista. I'm for sure going to get to McDowell.
Okay.
McDowell last year did a kind of a karma, kind of a carnival activity.
I'll be there.
Okay.
And then I'll also stop by the Grand Spring Musical.
When's the Grand Spring?
That's tomorrow night, too. I can't make it to that one. Valley Oaks Open House, anyone make that one the night, the next night?
I'm going to Pen Grove.
I'm going to Pen Grove, too.
Do you want me to go to Valley Oaks?
I would love for you to go to Valley Oaks.
You're, we'll be at Valley Oaks.
Probably make those gals feel great to, to great, see you there, right? Okay, I'm going to pencil you in for that one. You're the bomb.
We got double representation.
In ink, and your X in. Come on, aren't you going to McNeer Open House?
Me?
Yeah.
When is it?
You've got to bring it there.
Yes, I do.
18th at.
It's the 18th.
I can't, I have a show that night. Next year.
How about the McNeer Spring Concert? Do you go by?
On the ET, both Grant and McNeer have an open house.
I'll be at Grant. I don't know if they consider me a board member, though. They may, they may not want. They're not meeting.
Yeah, between the like 17th and Memorial Day.
We've got to get you retired.
I'm insane. I have a show, and then I'm going to DC with the kids.
Okay, and then just take a look at the 22nd. There's a few things, the 22nd and the 25th. So the 18th, the 22nd, and 25th. They've got the McNeer Spring Concert, the Pen Grove Spring Concert, Tannellworth Open House, and Mary Collins. So I wanted to take a peek and see if you can make any of those. And we're all set for the graduations. We've got one, two of us for Cherry Valley, but we'll go.
Mike said he'd go to Cherry Valley.
Well, Mike was the only one going to Cherry Valley, so I.
Find Franka.
Oh, he's making you go.
Yeah, so I'll do kind of work in Cherry Valley.
Cherry Valley is 6:30 on June 1st P.M. And they're fancy, you get, they have a whole spread of food and cake and a whole bit.
They treat you good.
And you're driving.
I don't know.
Refreshments are 5:30, too.
Cherry Valley. Excellent.
Chris will be doing a walking tour of the grounds.
Don't bring your shovel.
Actually, we're going to do. We're going to have some tracker release traps.
How about a bounty on each gofer?
Everyone that promotes.
As a fundraiser.
Can't you go for, pay $10 back?
Okay. Oh, and then these two things. You've got the Senior Recognition Night Tuesday, May 16th. I think you guys all got these, and FAA. I'm out both those nights, I'm already at something. So if anyone can go to either.
I'm going to be tomorrow, so I think, sorry.
Next year.
Next year, we're all going to sit back and go, Ellen's going, Ellen's going. You know, they're all fun things to go to.
I know, and I will attend a lot more when I no longer.
Okay, we, I think we still need more time in closed session.
Yeah, but I think I would recommend that you report out already on what you have.
Okay, I can do that. So we're going to return to closed session, but that's not a reportable item. But I can report out on our student disciplines. If things weren't so tense in the rural school, I'd say there were 42. There are not. Okay, here we go. Case number 31. A case has been presented to the board. The student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of this year, 2016-2017, and the fall semester of 2017-2018. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Recommendations, yeah.
I need a motion in the second. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, no? Okay. Case number 32. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions. The student's suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of 2016-17 and the fall semester of 2017-2018. Conditions above subject to review Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's it. Only two, which is great. We will sign these and we will be adjourned to closed session. We will come back out if you're still around to tell you that nothing's report. It's not a reportable item, so you don't feel bad if you want to run away. And Mike would gamble with me.